I'm just looking for our recognition Oliver Crane Wiley. So Sammy, I don't know if Oliver would be on a different.
Yeah, I just texted the family to see because I didn't see them there.
Yeah, I don't see him in the list.
So I can keep you updated.
Okay, well, I guess we will, we'll get started either way.
You ready to go?
I am ready to go.
Okay, let's call this meeting of the Carver School Committee order on at 7:06. It's March 22nd, 2021. He's the gavel here, make it official. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, we are, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We're actually doing it in multiple formats tonight. So the committee is meeting in person. James O'Brien, committee member, is meeting with us on Zoom. And we're also broadcasting live on Area 58 on Channel 14 and 15. So you have multiple ways to access the meeting night through Area 58, through the live Zoom broadcast, or in person.
Okay, so our first item for tonight is a recognition of the math team.
So we're proud to have Tammy Johnson as the coach of the math team here with us. And we were going to recognize Oliver Crane Wiley. Oliver, I do not see here, Tammy, I don't know if you've heard from him. I don't, I still.
Yeah, I just, I just heard from his mom and she said, okay. So I'm kind of, I don't know what that means. So I don't know.
If you want, we can, we can hold a minute and we can go to comments from the EAPC and the Student Council update. If that's okay, Tammy, we'll wait, we'll wait a minute. And then also, just in terms of, we just wanted people to know if you want to participate in public comment tonight. By doing so, you want to join in the chat. So if you're interested in commenting during public comment, please put your name in the chat. You'll have the option to do that over the next few minutes as we do comments from the EAPC, as we do the Student Council update, and as we do the math team recognition of Oliver Crane Wiley. So as I said, if you are interested in participating in public comment tonight, you can begin to put your name into the chat now. That gives people five, 10 minutes, plenty of opportunity to put their name into the chat if they're interested in participating in public comment.
All right, so we'll go to comments on the EAPC, please, Tammy.
I think Tom, I think Tom is actually going to join us tonight. Let's see if I see him. Tom is a panelist. All right, Tom, you should be able to turn your.
I think I, here I am. Good evening, another busy, busy week for all of us. Just locally, I hope, you know, everyone stays safe as we continue to bring our kids in full time. I also hope everybody gets an opportunity to get to the vaccine. You know, I was actually able to get my first dose, so that's on a personal level. Would still advocate for staff alone to be able to get it locally. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know that, you know, that's kind of a statewide decision, but I'm remiss not to say that. And then also, just lastly, as we send students back in, I would continue to advocate to push, at a minimum, push the MK casts off this school year. You know, sending back students back in for social emotional reasons. I think giving them a test that's been, you know, proven to cause stress and anxiety would, would not be, you know, a good thing to do. So that's all. I hope everybody's doing well.
That's it. All right, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Are we ready with Oliver?
Yeah, we're going to go with Student Council update with Jay Peters. So we're happy to have Jay Peters here representing the Carver High School Student Council. I will let Jay represent, introduce himself. Jay, you should be able to turn your video on and unmute yourself. Hey, Jay, how you doing? If you'd like to take a minute to introduce yourself to the committee, that'd be great.
My name's Jay Peters. I'm part of the Student Council. I'm the historian this year. Usually Quinn does this, but he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here in his place.
Welcome, Jay.
Welcome, Jay.
Thank you. So it's really just one big thing that I was asked to talk about. So we're hosting a polar plunge fundraiser fundraiser for Special Olympics. It's this Saturday, March 27th at 11:00 a.m. at Nelson Park in Plymouth. There was an email sent out asking to complete a survey or in a pre-registration form to attend the event and just to ask, so we can get like attendance going for it. Our goal is to raise a thousand dollars for it. And participants, you don't have to jump in the water if you don't want to. You can simply donate or tend to cheer others on. Students were asking for a minimum of $25 to show support and awareness for Special Olympics. The mission of Special Olympics is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-type sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continuing opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, participate in sharing of gifts, skills, and friendship with their families, other Special Olympics athletes, and the community. And then one big thing that we're advocating is the juniors and seniors can earn five hours of community service for donating a minimum of $25 and then either attending or completing, completing, doing the plunge itself.
Very good.
Awesome.
All right, thank you, Jay.
Thank you very much, Jay. Was that it, Jay?
That's all I have. I was, you know, I didn't have too much time to discuss it with.
Totally.
I didn't want to cut you off.
You guys are lucky that we're having some very nice warm weather, so the water might not be too freezing.
Oh, yeah, it was freezing last year when you were down in Hyannis.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was cold.
Well, great, well, good luck with that, and thank you for all your efforts. Student Council.
All right, thank you, Jay, thanks for being here this evening.
Okay, now we're going to go to the recognition if we have Oliver ready, if he's on.
So Oliver is not here, but I will do a brief.
He, he is here, Scott.
Okay.
I see his name.
They just came in, yep.
Yes. Thank you. We just met yesterday, too. So I think yesterday was Sunday, right?
There you go.
There he is. Thank you.
That's fair, I just got to make him a co-host. All right, Oliver, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on if you could, that'd be great. So seventh grader Oliver Crane Wiley has qualified for the Math Counts Chapter Invitational. He placed sixth out of 29 middle school students in the chapter competition in February. He then qualified for the Math Counts State Competition, which is coming up, I believe, this Thursday, March 25th. So Oliver, we're here to congratulate you on making the state competition and wish you good luck this Thursday and hope we hear great news. He's only our third student in the history of the math team to reach this level of performance. So it's outstanding for Oliver to be able to do that. And I'm going to give Tammy Johnson, the math team coach, a little opportunity to talk about it, and Oliver with an opportunity to talk about it. So Tammy, if you'd like to give us a little more background?
I do, because it was, it's definitely been obviously a challenging year for all of us, but I think it's one of the good things about math team. We, we meet every Wednesday from 2:30 to 3:30 for the most part, unless there's like a practice competition or another date, like this Thursday will be at seven o'clock. So we basically have been doing a lot of practicing and there's been, because it's been all virtual this year, people that, students that are remote have an opportunity to join. So it was also a time for students, whether they're remote or in hybrid, they had an opportunity to, you know, meet up and we do games and things like that. And just wanted to kind of put it out there. This, we are now in the process while Oliver is going for the states, the rest of us on the math team are working with some of the fourth and fifth graders. We had one fourth grader join us last Wednesday to do a gold status project, which is part of the Math Counts, the club. So there's a club and then a competition team. So we, we participate in both. So it's been a real exciting year. Oliver has been tremendous. He did very well as a sixth grader last year, so it wasn't surprising this year, but I'm, I still, it's amazing. And I'm, it's a, it's definitely a hard thing to do. So Oliver, can you just give a little bit of your perspective of, of your experience?
Yeah. During the math competition, I struggled a little bit with the questions, but I tried my hardest and I got through the next round.
Oliver froze on us a little bit. We'll give him a second, like, like all of us, he's having a little bit of technical difficulty tonight. I'm sure he'll buffer back with us. Hopefully.
Oliver, maybe try to turn your video off, it might help.
Hi, did you hear anything I said?
Yeah, well, we heard most of it, Oliver, they just froze at the very end.
Yeah, so I've just tried my hardest and I hope that this next round will go good.
Yeah, so congratulations, we're excited to see you going on to the state competition, qualifying for that, and hopefully we'll hear great news that you did really well this upcoming Thursday. And any, any other members of the community have any?
I would like to say that I was captain of the Carver High School math team my junior and senior year back in 98 and 99. And I never made it to that level. So Oliver, congratulations, and math is awesome and stick with it because you'll have a bright future. And congratulations and good luck. Math team's near and dear to my heart. Go math team. Thank you very much.
I'm a, I'm a big math fan myself, but to be on a list of, of three people in Carver's history is a pretty short list, Oliver, so congratulations, Ben, that's fantastic. You should be very proud.
Good luck, Oliver, bring it home.
Yes, definitely. Congratulations, Oliver, and to the entire math team. Good luck.
All right, thank you, Tammy, thank you, Oliver, thanks for being here this evening and good luck on Thursday.
All righty, so move on to, oh, no, go to comments now. Do we have any comments in the general?
So we'll do one more reminder, but at this time, we do not have anybody who put their name into the chat. Just want to comment for comments from the general public. So one more opportunity, if you're interested in commenting this evening, if you can put your name into the chat, that'd be greatly appreciated.
We'll wait a moment for that.
So no, as of right now, no one is saying they're interested in commenting during comment, general.
Okay.
Comments from the general public.
We'll move on. We're going to move on to approval of minutes. This is February 22nd, 2021, open session meeting minutes.
Move to approve, February 22nd, 2021, open session minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any questions, corrections, concerns?
I have a comment. It was 18 pages worth of notes. Gina, that was really well captured. Well, that was awesome. Significant, that was, yeah, it's really well done.
Very good.
Thank you, Gina.
You said I had to stop for a compliment.
On the psych route, a lot of people were like, oh, that's, that was, that was an intense meeting, so that was, was well captured.
Now, we're meeting in person tonight, but we are still on Zoom. So do we still have to do a roll call vote? That's my question.
No, we, well, we're, we're meeting in person, it's live on TV. Yeah, James is, James is virtual, so Jamie, James might have to roll call. So I guess we should do a roll call.
We should do the roll call.
Doesn't hurt to do the roll call.
Right, all right, we'll start, we'll start with James.
Hi.
Stephanie?
Stephanie, already, I.
Jen?
Jen, proud, I.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, I.
Andy Cottrell, the unanimous approval of those minutes. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to communications for the day, day on the Hill.
Okay, so we have a couple of communications for this meeting. First, the Day on the Hill, which is the annual opportunity hosted by the Mass Association of School Committees to advocate for schools at Capitol Hill. Typically, this event is an in-person event where they have some presenters and then you have the opportunity to meet with your local representatives to advocate positions. This year, last year, we didn't have the Day on the Hill because of COVID. This year, it is going to be a virtual event. So I just wanted to make the committee aware, it's Friday, April 16th, from nine to two. They haven't sent out the link yet or registration yet. But if you were available on Friday, April 16th, and were interested in attending the Day on the Hill, we can certainly register for that. Like I said, it'll be virtual. And if any member of the committee would like to attend, I will attend also. And we can join virtually, and it is a great opportunity. You know, they, they haven't really given us a lot of detail on how they're going to structure it exactly. You know, you, as I said, it used to be some presenters, then you had some opportunity to go and meet with your local representatives. I don't know if they're going to give some breakout groups with the opportunity to meet with your local representatives. Not exactly sure that's going to work, but more details to come. And right now, if you want to hold Friday, April 16th on the calendar, that'd be great. And if you're interested in participating, if you can just let Gina and I know.
Okay, thank you very much.
I know when I did the, the trainings last summer for, with the, with the Massey, they utilized breakout rooms to still allow likes for small group discussion and stuff when those weren't typically in person.
Yeah, so, so hopefully you'll have that opportunity, really. It also depends on your legislators. The reality is I've attended the Day on the Hill many times. And, you know, sometimes your legislators are available, sometimes they're not even when it was in person. So I think it's going to depend a little bit on their availability.
Even when they, even when they make it virtual, they make it a time I still can't come, still can't go.
Can we actually confirm it's on the 16th? Because I'm looking at this flyer, it says Friday, the 16th on top, and on the bottom, it says April 19th. So can we just confirm that it's actually?
Yeah, we'll, we'll confirm it's the 16th. The, the 19th would surprise me a little bit because it's Patriots Day. And the first day of April vacation, but you never know, it could be the 19th. But I believe it is the 16th, but we'll confirm it.
Okay, moving on, we want to item B, designation of innovation pathway at Carver Middle High School.
Okay, so we're really excited to let the community know that our manufacturing pathway has, has been designated by the Department of Education as an innovation pathway. So we went, we went into a process really over the past year. It was a two-part application process. So we received the first part of the application and the first part of the grant was actually a $25,000 grant to support the build-out of our manufacturing pathway. And then the second part is to actually have the designation as an innovation pathway. This is a competitive process, so not every district that goes through the process of getting an innovation pathway gets that designation. I don't have the exact numbers of the districts that applied and those that were accepted. Those will actually be coming out from DESI shortly, and I'll let the community know once we have those. But we're just really excited to have the designation. So this designation says, it's a statement by the Department of Education that we're developing a robust manufacturing pathway that provides outstanding opportunities for our students within the Carver Public Schools. Being designated as an innovation pathway also gives us the opportunity to apply for other grants and other opportunities to expand the program and support the program. So a lot of time and energy went into this application process over the past year. And I'd like to thank the people who took the lead in that, which was Meredith Erickson, Mike Schultz, Michelle Littleton, Dave Ruda, Tammy Miller, Chrissy McKenna, Christina Nolan, and Tris Winslow. And particularly to Meredith, Meredith kind of led the project as a whole. And we're just really excited, we've talked about this a couple of times as part of Pathways, and we're excited to have that official designation from the Department of Education of an innovation pathway for manufacturing.
Great, that's very good. Congratulations on that. It should be another great opportunity for the students of Carver Schools. Thank you very much for everyone involved.
I don't know if there's anything you want to add in?
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
It's just really exciting.
Yeah. Okay, that's great. So now we'll move on to reports from the superintendent, personnel updates.
So we have had some personnel movements since our last meeting a few weeks ago. First, we're excited, and I'll actually, I'll invite Melissa to our next meeting. We've hired Melissa Larry as the next Director of Special Education for the Carver Public Schools. We'll invite Melissa to the meeting and have her recognize you to the committee. We also hired Jacob Connor as an ESP for kindergarten. Jen Lyman is a long-term substitute at the elementary school. Lynn Williams is a CDL bus driver. Sharon Alzheimer is a lunchroom monitor. And we also had a couple resignations. Brian Kloss is a teacher at middle, at the middle high school, effective at the end of the year. Ruth Ann Donovan is an RBT ESP pre-K at the elementary school and a TVI support personnel as an ESP, Jennifer Caroll. We had those three resignations since we last met.
All right, well, welcome to everybody and thanks to everyone who's moving on. We'll go to item B, next pathways update.
And so we talked at our last meeting that we would show everybody the, the videos that were being built, developed to promote and sell the pathways program. So just wanted to show one, another video. Last time, we showed biotechnology. Tonight, we're going to show our environmental agricultural video.
Will that be on the?
It's, it's only, I, well, I think we should only do it on the Zoom because if we do it on both, we're just not going to time them well. So the, it will, it will show up on Area 58 as well.
On the broken.
Yeah.
I'm Sean Lyman, I teach here at Carver Middle High School, and I teach environmental science and physics.
Hi, I'm Michelle Littleton, I'm the Science Department Chair, and I also teach environmental science here.
Having the environmental science pathway in Carver, we have access to a variety of different ecosystems and habitats from the coastal habitats of Cape Cod and Plymouth and Massachusetts Bay to the pine barrens, to other forest habitats here, including agricultural ones like cranberries, which Carver is known for.
In the STEM inquiry lab, students are going to learn a lot of hands-on lab techniques that will prepare them to move into future courses in the pathway. They'll do things like chromatography and serial dilution, microscope skills. And then after they finish STEM inquiry course, they can move into the second level course, which is Principles of Ecology.
And in that course, we go out in the field all the time, whether we're outside doing fieldwork, taking samples in the forest, marking trees, running transects, doing population studies, or working in the hoop house, seeing how plants grow, figuring that stuff out. We are outside all the time. That course is balanced between in-class stuff and fieldwork.
When I came to Carver 22 years ago, there was no environmental classes and I started the environmental program. Now I'm really excited to see that it's going to bloom into a whole pathway for students to learn about the environment.
Technical difficulties working through that. But, you know, as we're excited about the build of our pathways, our goal would be in each mean to kind of bring one of the videos highlighting one of the programs that we would be offering next year. You know, students have been going through the course selection process at the middle high school. And right now, our numbers are really strong in terms of signups for each of these programs. And, you know, we'll be giving you more information as we go forward over the next couple of months about the number of courses we're going to be able to offer, the number of students who've signed up. But so far, the tremendous is really been, the interest has really been tremendous in all of our pathway programs, and we're excited about the way, where we're going, the direction this is heading in. It's just, it's tremendous to see these programs being built out, to see students signing up for the courses, and for us to take that next step in terms of what our vision is for pathways.
Very good. He's very exciting. Maybe you have any comments on that or questions?
And hopefully next time we'll do a little better, I'll get in the video to run.
Then invite him to.
Learn to our mistakes.
Yeah, it's all right. People are only human. It's our first meeting back, so we'll be live. All right, we'll move on to item C, bi-weekly metrics.
Okay, so we'll go through, as we usually do, our updates on COVID within the community and within the state of Massachusetts and look at our, our weekly metrics data. And what, what this data is going to show actually is we've had a slight uptick in Carver and in Plymouth. The other area communities are still on the downward trend a little bit. But Carver, we, we've had a little bit of, we're still a yellow community. But we have had an increase in the number of cases. And as people know, over the last couple of weeks, we've had an increase in the number of cases within the school community. So right now, for the week of March 12th to March 19th, Carver Board of Health is reporting 24 active new cases during that week with a total active case count of 28 in 19 homes. Now, it's tough to match this data exactly because it's like, we didn't meet with the Board of Health and go over, here's our students and compare that with their list of active cases. But knowing our list of students and staff over that time period, we actually had 14 active cases. So within the school community of the, there's a good chance that 14 of the 24 active new cases over that period were actually either students or staff members within the Carver Public Schools who lived in Carver. So that is something of note, which is a little higher than it's been at previous times or other times during the year. And then, you know, and so hopefully we're not going to continue on that trend. And then when you look at the state's overall reporting, when you look at Carver, you can see that's, you can see that slight uptick in terms of, you know, the average daily incident rate going up to 13.4. The percentage of positivity went down a little bit, but our number of active cases is higher than it was a couple of weeks ago. A slight uptick, not a huge uptick. Kingston is actually trending, has continued to trend downward. So their numbers have been lower over time. Middleboro, the same thing, you're going to see that their numbers are trending downward over the last couple of weeks. As I said, Plymouth is not, Plymouth is like Carver, Plymouth has trended upward a little bit. And Plymouth actually went back to a red community during our last report, jumping up to 27 cases per 1,000 over the last 14 days and having their positivity rate going up to 4.74. Plimpton continued to trend downward and stays as a gray community with the number really dropping down to only 2.4 average daily cases per 100,000 and a positivity percentage of almost 1%. Rochester, same thing, they continued down, stayed a gray community. Wareham also trended in a downward direction. So looking at the overall data, it seems like at least over the last couple of weeks, there's been a little bit of an increase in the Carver Plymouth area. But other surrounding communities have been down a little bit in terms of their numbers. And we've clearly seen that within the school system. We've seen it uptick in cases within the schools over the last couple of weeks. In terms of, I do, I know I've pulled this up the last couple of times in terms of the state data on WCVB, and we've almost haven't been using the state report because between what we pull out for the weekly metrics and what they show on the WCVB report, it's really a good summary of what's in that state report. And, you know, we've just been looking at that trend overall for the state. And the state trend is positive, again, saying Plymouth and Carver has been up a little bit, but the state trend is still in a positive direction. The one thing I wanted to note here is then the WCVB is now tracking vaccinations. And it is interesting to note that as of today, 28.14% of Massachusetts has had at least one dose of a vaccine and 15.75% of the population is considered to be fully vaccinated at this time, meaning they've had two shots of Pfizer or Moderna or one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson and at least two weeks ago. So it's nice to see that we're almost up to 30% statewide that have their first vaccination. And we'll look at the Carver data, actually, I surveyed the staff. That's in our presentation about transition, and we can talk about where the staff stands in terms of vaccinations.
I'm glad this site is loading faster than the last.
Yeah, it's, it's a little slow.
Let's say maybe let it load, we'll go move on to.
Yeah.
You're right.
You know, and again, we're seeing that same trend data in terms of daily reported cases. One thing I did want to note, because I did go and look, so as of today, the report, as of yesterday, this is yesterday's data reported today, there were 1,103 new reported cases in the state of Massachusetts. That is actually the lowest number since October 26th, where it was 1,101 cases reported in Massachusetts. So Massachusetts is still seeing a positive trend in terms of the number of cases reported on a daily basis. You know, similar data, when you look at hospitalizations, right now, as of yesterday, there were 145 patients in intensive care in Massachusetts. That is also the lowest since I had November 8th. So on November 8th, I was 143 patients in intensive care. So when you look at some of the statewide data over time, you pull out different things, you can actually see the numbers are better than they really have been since October or November across the state in terms of COVID. In terms of COVID. Attendance tracking and the dashboard. You know, it is important to highlight a couple of things here because as I said, we've had a couple of cases and the reality is we've had a return to full in person. And we've said throughout that a return to full in person is going to cause more close contacts. So we had a couple of cases over the elementary school this weekend that resulted in a couple of elementary classes being quarantined. So when you look at our current numbers, you know, so we have 10 active positive students right now, district wide, and we have 86 students in quarantine. That 86 is the highest number of students we've had in quarantine since January 12th. And that is the week that we went remote at the middle high school. Now the distinction, there's two distinctions here from where we were on January 12th. If we go back and look at this data on January 12th, we had 14 staff members who were either quarantined or positive. And right now, we have three staff members who are quarantined or positive. So that that makes a big difference in terms of, and there was a big focus of those quarantines with the middle high school. So most of the students and most of the staff members that we went remote were at the middle high school. Now it's more evenly spread between the two buildings in terms of the number of students in quarantine. And there is a reality that the community needs to hear and that the school committee and all of us need to realize is that going full in person, there's good, it's going to result in more close contacts. It's it's just, it has to. It's just the reality of the situation. And we've seen that bear out over this past week, where we've had two positive cases in the elementary school where the students were in school and their classes, you know, were identified as close contacts and we've asked those students to quarantine. So we're going to see a little bit of that as we, as we go through it.
I do think the one, if there is a silver lining to it all, is at least with those classes, they're quarantining together so they're able to do full remote schooling together. And so they're still with their teacher and they're still being, you know, there's equitable education happening.
Yes, so those classes we have in those two situations at the elementary school, we have had the entire class go remote. The teacher is going remote with them and they are going to be have remote for this whole week and are scheduled to return in person next Tuesday. Assuming that, you know, people are tested and they're feeling well, you know, and they meet all the standards of the protocols as a, as a close contact. And then you see that also reflected within the dashboard, you know, in terms of, you know, we have 48 students in quarantine or isolation at the elementary school, 38 at the middle high school. You know, six positive students at the elementary school, four positive students at the middle high school, you know, same numbers we just saw before broken down by building. But again, the staff numbers are better. So we have fewer number of staff. You know, so we have, right now, we only have one employee who is actively positive and we have two employees out as close contacts. And then district wide, we did have a little bit of a spike in the district wide. Last week, we had several district wide staff members who were positive. They've all recovered and returned to work. And right now, district wide staff do not have any positive cases or anybody out as a close contact. So I guess the the big picture summary, the takeaway from looking at all this data is that over the last couple of weeks, both in Carver's had a mini little, I mean, I don't know, I call them any surge. I know surge is the right word. But there's definitely, I don't know if you can have a mini surge. Is that, if that's possible. But we've had, Carver's had a slight increase in our cases as is, as is Plymouth and, and the school has been a reflection of that. So we've also found an increase of our cases within the school community. And being full in person at the elementary school has led to an increase in close contacts. With no predictions for the future per se.
So we have 14, 14 cases, 86 quarantine and three staff.
No, so right now, we currently have 10 active cases. 86 quarantine and, and three staff members either quarantined or positive. So we have one positive staff member, two in isolation quarantine.
And how, okay, and how many, approximately how many students are attending the buildings? Would you guess now?
Well, the both buildings are about 750 students. The, I actually have the number for the, for the middle high school. The middle high school has 738 students, 104 are remotes. That means there's 634 students, so 48 of 600 and, what did I just say? You asked the question. I actually have that data. So it's 738 minus 104 is. Jason, you got a note for me?
Six. I was just, I was just trying to do mental math, to be honest.
Yeah, well, we actually, we also maintain that in the dashboard. It's 6.44% of quarantine. There you go, Jason. Nice showing the nice math.
Very good. All right, thank you.
And same thing, it's 5% of the students at the, sorry, 6% at the elementary school, 5.13% at the middle high school who are currently quarantined.
I'm sorry, I created my own.
But I know you're asking like the exact, the exact breakdown of, of active students and, and people in remote and how many kids are actually in school. All right.
Good, thank you.
So that's our summary on the data.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any other questions or.
Jason.
So it's.
What?
Lastest train of thought.
Okay.
This in-person thing's throwing me off. Oh, so this number here is of all elementary students, right? Not of current elementary students inside the building.
Correct. The percentage on the dashboard is based on all students enrolled. It's not based on the number of students currently in person.
So when you make these decisions about, you know, remote, having to go remote for a few days, is it based on the total percent or is it a total number of students or you're basing on a total number of students in the building at that time?
It's a total percentage. I mean, I think we have to really, last time, when we went remote at the middle high school, the statement I made at the time was 10% of our staff and 10% of our students were remote. You know, so and and some people, some people came back to me and said, well, is that the number? If we reach 10%, does that mean we're going remote? And my answer was no, we're always going to evaluate every situation depending on what it is and what's happening. And, you know, so right now, you know, I don't know the exact number on the middle, you know, the elementary school. You know, so it's 48 students right now who are, who are quarantined. My guess is about 36 of them, each class was 18 or 19. So about around 36, don't hold me to the number of 36, but approximately 36 of them are quarantined in two classrooms. Based on a positive within that classroom. So if you look at the whole school's population, we have six in-person classrooms at each grade level. You know, so the majority of students are able to attend in person. So there's 36 in-person class, well, can you get that's five, it's 35 in-person classes running right now. 33 of the 35 are actively attending in person.
That's fine, I'm.
And, and then we'll get into this a little bit as we get into next presentation about some of the realities of the new regulations that have been put in place by the Department of Education in terms of in-person learning, remote learning and hybrid learning. And those right now are still options of the school committee. But after April 5th and after April 28th, some of those options change. And we'll get into that as we get into our next presentation.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this for Scott? Seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to item D, transitioning students in grades six and 12.
And I remember Mr. Schultz joined us just in case you have any questions from Mr. Schultz as, as we go through the presentation.
Mr. Schultz can come to this mic here if he wants to speak.
Hello.
Welcome.
So obviously, the takeaway here is, and again, some of the details is I think people are fully aware that the Department of Education has established some timelines for students to return full in person. And we're going to talk a little bit about that through the presentation. We've got a recommendation for transitioning all of our students back six through 12 and then talk about some, some of the beginning discussions of some of the specifics of what that would look like. So, but I wanted to remind people a little bit in terms of the CDC guidelines for in-person learning, which we talked about as we made the presentation about transitioning the elementary school. And the CDC has identified first some essential elements and then some supporting elements. Your essential elements are consistent implementation of layered mitigation strategies, wearing masks, social distancing. But as I'm going to mention in the next slide, this weekend, the CDC actually came out in support of the three feet of social distancing. So they publicly, they have now publicly supported three feet versus six feet. As part of their layered mitigation strategies of wearing masks, social distancing, staying home when sick, hand hygiene. It says that a committee or a, or a community or the state should review indicators of community transition and determine community risk. That's what we just spent a little bit of time doing. They recommend a phased mitigation as a migration of learning models based on the level of community transition. And we're taking a phased approach in terms of bringing students back full in person. Obviously, some of this is now being a little more dictated by the state. They also recommended some supporting elements be in place. Testing to identify individuals with COVID-19 to limit transition, transmission. And right now, we do have an active testing program for students who are symptomatic. So if a student is symptomatic, there's an opportunity to test through school. And then we're also doing the pool testing for all staff on a weekly basis. And then the second supporting element is vaccination for teachers and school staff. At this time, the guidelines which came out in February, talked about as soon as supply allows. We all know that teachers and staff members now have the opportunity to be vaccinated. So where do we stand in terms of that? I did survey the staff. I got 188 responses. We have a little over 290 employees. So about two thirds of our employees responded. And just where do you stand with your vaccination? We have 10% that say I'm fully vaccinated. I've received both. Or my last shot off is Johnson and Johnson over two weeks ago. We have 8.5% say I'm almost fully vaccinated. I've had both of my second shot, but it hasn't been two weeks yet. You know, obviously the largest percentage, almost 50%. I've had one shot and I have my second one scheduled. 13.8% said I have an appointment scheduled for my first shot. 16%, I've not made an appointment yet. And 2.7% said they do not plan on getting vaccinated. And as of right now, it's not a requirement for staff to be vaccinated. It is certainly their option. So we, we over the last couple of weeks, as a school district, have actually made a lot of progress in terms of teachers getting vaccinated through the state system. You know, as the APC mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we'd still be supportive of having some, the options for some local vaccination. Right now, that isn't an option for us in community Carver. But if it was here, we would certainly, we're supportive of that happening if the state sees it wise to do that. But this is a pretty good profile that our teachers have been able to get appointments and have begun the process of vaccination. And I'm going to come back to the slide a little bit later on as we get into the dates for transition at the middle high school. I do believe that attempting to connect the vaccination of staff with a full in-person transition at the middle high school is an important thing to do. There is just a lot more movement at that building, a lot more crossover. And so if we can get as close to having teachers fully vaccinated to the return, I think that would be important. And this shows that we're making some, some good steps in that direction. Back to some of the guidance for full in-person learning. So the DESI guidance, again, we talked about this when we transitioned the elementary school, the universal wearing mask K through 12, physical distancing, the minimum of three feet, which I, as I said, the CDC recently supported this guidance. The establishing of cohort models if possible, the limiting of visitors to schools, hand washing and hand hygiene and staying home when sick. And then continuing contact tracing, identifying close contacts, following isolation quarantine guidelines. So the other positive in terms of vaccination is once someone is fully vaccinated, the CDC, the Mass Department of Public Health, DESI have all supported that those, if you're a fully vaccinated person, does not need to follow close contact guidelines. So that's also a central piece in terms of being, having staff vaccinated, then once all of our staff is fully vaccinated, then in terms of if there is a positive case in the school, the staff doesn't have to follow the close contact guidelines unless they become feel sick. You know, so then, but then they follow the process of feeling sick, they have to, then they, then they revert to the close contact. So if they, if they were a possibility of close contact, become ill, they need to be tested and follow those processes. But otherwise, they do not need to follow the close contact.
You said that came from CDC?
Yeah.
DESI?
Yes. So the CDC is in support of close contacts and not have, I'm sorry, fully vaccinated individuals not having to follow close contact protocols. Right. So we showed these pitches a couple of times. These are actually, were done over the summer. At the middle high school, there are two types of desks. So we have two classrooms set up at three feet apart, just to give you a sense of what that looks like in the classroom. So it is, it is tight in, in both rooms. I believe this, the first room had 23 desks, the one before had 24. And you know, our goal, and we'll get into this a little bit in the presentation, but later, is to not have classes of 23 or 24. You know, we're looking to have smaller classes and it may take some steps to do that because that's fairly tightly packed. So we would like to, you know, if possible, as much as possible, have our class sizes be under 20. Wanted to remind the community again, I think people are aware of this, that DESI also has updated their transportation guidance. And they say if you follow these core practices of universal wearing of masks, ventilating by keeping the windows open at least two inches and assigning seats for students that you can, in essence, there's no more capacity limits on your buses. There would only be a cap, capacity limit if we were a reg community. And in a reg community, you cannot exceed two students per seat at the, at the middle high school level, which generally we don't exceed two students per seat at the middle high school level anyhow. Now, this is, this is what's become a little different from when we talked about transitioning the elementary school. Is, and I think I want to address it with the community, that I know prior to the transition for elementary school, we did a community survey. We did a staff survey. And, and I didn't do that prior to this meeting because ultimately the Department of Education has made some decisions for us. So asking the community of, do you want to come, I, what's, how, how strongly do you feel about coming back? Do you support it? In some ways is kind of a mute, a moot question. And I don't want to ask people a question that even if their answer was no, we don't support coming back. Saying, well, the Department of Education says we're coming back anyhow. So that, that's why there was the decision not to do a community survey to gauge people's comfort level of making the return. So getting into the guideline, so on March 5th, the Massachusetts Board of Education gave Commissioner Riley authority to determine when district-wide hybrid or remote learning models no longer count as structured learning time. The Board of Education did say they will still allow families to select to be remote. I want to make that very clear. So the, and because this question's already come up a couple of times, you know, this, this has been news, been some discussions about it, some families have already reached out and say, does this mean remote's over and we have to go back in person? So that's why we're very clear, it does not. Families still have the option to be remote, both at the elementary level and at the middle high school level. The commissioner's plan is legally binding. So after this March 5th meeting, where the Board of Education gave Commissioner Riley the authority to determine to make these decisions, he then came out with a formal plan. So the commissioner's plan, as of April 5th, districts are required to offer full in-person learning to all students in grades K through five, five days a week with an average of five hours of instruction per day. As of April 28th, districts are required to offer full in-person instruction to all students in grades six through eight, five days a week with an average of 5.5 hours of instruction per day. So as of April 5th, we will no longer be able to have remote half-day Wednesdays at the elementary school. Because it doesn't meet the standard of five hours, an average of five hours of instruction per day. And as of April 28th, we will not be able to have remote half-day Wednesdays at the middle school level. Because that doesn't meet the standard of 5.5 hours of instruction on average per day. The commissioner has not set an official timeline for nine through 12 yet. So some of that decision still does lie with the school committee. But he does say, he has said that he will announce a date for, for nine through 12 return. And that the latest he would announce that date is by April 1st. So the commissioner has made clear there will be a date that all students in nine through 12 also are required to return full in person five days a week. The numbers here are consistent with the pre-COVID student learning time requirements of 900 hours for an elementary school and 990 hours for a middle high school over 180-day school year. So if you do this, if you do the math, if you take 180, multiply it by five hours per day at an elementary school, you come up with 900 hours. If you take the 180-day school, a regular school year, multiply that by 5.5 hours of instruction per day, you come up with 990 hours. So in essence, the Department of Education is saying we have to return to pre-COVID learning, pre-COVID school in person as of these dates. So as we prepared to make that transition, I wanted to give the committee a little bit of background in terms of where we were in terms of enrollment at the middle high school and the number of students who are in. Uh, in terms of enrollment at the middle high school and the number of students who are in person and remote. Uh, so this is the breakdown by grade level. Uh, and I said, there, there's currently seven hundred and thirty-eight students enrolled at the middle high school. Uh, and a hundred and four of them are, are remote, which is about fourteen percent. And I, I want to address this as well. Uh, I know when we transitioned to that elementary school, in that same survey that I talked about earlier, we asked a survey question of, what are you gonna do? You know, once the decision's made, are you gonna stay full in person, or are you gonna transition to full in person, or are you gonna transition to remote? And what actually, what that survey said and what people actually ended up choosing to do was totally different. Uh, so we honestly, we didn't gain a lot of value from doing that survey. So we got the survey information and around about said that about thirty kids were gonna transition to remote. Said about twenty kids were gonna transition in person. We started doing some planning around those numbers. And then when people were actually given the choice and said, okay, the decision's been made, we're coming back full in person at the elementary school, March fifteenth, what are you gonna do? Uh, we only had two families decide to go remote. And I think, uh, somewhere around forty-eight to fifty decided to return in person. So the, the survey data just wasn't reflective of what ended up really happening. So same thing here, we decided not to do a survey last week, cause we just didn't want to have data to give to Mike to then say. Well, that, that's not actually what's gonna happen. And since we're moving in the direction of, of returning full in person, people are still gonna have that choice. You know, once the committee makes a decision tonight on what the date is, uh, a letter will go out to families tomorrow, Wednesday. Very similar process that we follow at the elementary school. We'll ask everybody to complete a transportation form. We'll ask everybody the direct question, if you wanna change models, if you wanna go full in person, you need to tell us by this date. If you wanna go remote, you need to tell us by this date. And we'll kind of follow the same process and structure that we did at the elementary school after the meeting. But I wanted to give the committee a sense of where we were in terms of number of students in each grade level who were remote and in person. And then at our next meeting, uh, we'll have the data of how, what people decide to do, and we can do that comparison to say. You know, what was the percentage of students who, who made a transition and what direction did they go? They go towards remote or they go towards in person? Um, so, uh, I'm gonna get a little bit more into the background of the recommendation, but right now, the recommendation of the administration. Is that we transition all students, grades six through twelve, uh, to full in person, uh, starting Monday, April twenty-sixth. Um, and like we did at the elementary school as a transition, we're gonna recommend a recommendation that we have a full professional development day. Uh, for teachers, six through twelve, in terms of planning for transition on Friday, April sixteenth, which is the Friday before April vacation. Uh, the Monday is the Monday after April vacation. As a reminder to the community, we do have a professional day coming up for elementary students, three through five. Uh, so those, as they plan to transition to full in person next Monday, the Friday night. Uh, so three through five kids, you're at home on Friday. Uh, we did pretty well with K two, we only had one or two kindergarten students, uh, show up to school on, on that day. So, the biggest change we're considering at the middle high school, uh, is the schedule. And we're gonna talk a little about the rationale of why we're looking to make that change. So grade six and seven, I'm not gonna talk a lot about their schedule, because it's actually what they're doing now in the hybrid model for full in person. There's not a lot of change there. The lunch period's gonna change a little bit. Right now, the sixth and seventh graders eat lunch together. And that third period lunch is gonna get split out. The beginning of that period will be a seventh grade lunch, the end of that period will be a sixth grade lunch. But in terms of the overall structure of the day, it's a full in-person day. It's not a lot of change, except for where, uh. The sixth graders have lunch is the only change in that schedule. The middle, the eight through twelve schedule is different. Um, so what we're, what we're recommending, what we'd like to do to move forward in terms of this transition. Is to actually run our block schedule, the four periods directly in a row. What that does is allow us to not serve lunch. Uh, lunch will become a grab and go lunch at the end of the day for students. Uh, we'd also schedule in some snack and mass breaks during the day. Uh, and maybe, maybe we, I don't know, Mike, do you have a little bit more to talk about that in a second? Uh, but we're, you know, really, lunch is the, lunch is the biggest hurdle at the middle high school. Uh, and the reason why lunch is the biggest hurdle is, is space, you know, and had. Ultimately, we started looking at schedules to give everybody lunch. And we would probably have to run five, six, seven lunches starting at nine-thirty in the morning, maybe ending one o'clock in the afternoon. The other option would be to have kids having lunch everywhere in the building. Uh, in terms of gym spaces, some districts are using hallways. The possibility of classrooms, but classroom spaces cause a lot of problems, because teachers have to have lunch too. Uh, and coverage and scheduling, it, the logistical piece of doing lunch at the middle high school. Just has a lot of challenges, you know, so, and right now, the lunch guidance has not changed. So transportation guidance has changed. Even the CDC going from six feet to three feet over the weekend is a change. Um, right now, the lunch guidance is still at least six feet apart, facing the same direction. Uh, and, and that just creates a lot of logistical challenges for us. You know, if, if that guidance is still in place next year, I think we're gonna have to consider other options. So we're really, really looking, this is a short-term solution, uh, for the problem we have now, and we'll see where we are in September. And come up with recommendations at that time. You know, if the committee supports an April twenty-sixth transition, we're really looking at seven weeks of school, I believe. Uh, and, and it's not, it's not the greatest solution. It's a long day. Uh, so we want to recognize for kids, getting there at seven-twenty and going through their four block classes in a row, uh, is a long day. And that's why I was saying, we're gonna have to build in some breaks, we're gonna have to build in a snack piece for them. Uh, every student would have the option to have a grab and go lunch at the end of the day. So as they left, eh, you know, the other transition for us, this adds a bus run, so we would be transporting students home. Uh, so we're in position that we do, uh, a third bus run, so there'd be a bus at one oh four for all of our students in eight through twelve will take the bus. There'd be a bus at two oh five for all of our sixth and seventh grade students to take a bus. And there'd be buses at the elementary school as always, at the end of their day, between two forty-five and three o'clock. Uh, so we'd add a bus run, which does add, add, adds an expense for the district as well. Uh, but we, you know, we've had some savings in transportation, in essence, because we've only been running our buses for four days a week. And not running the bus on the fifth day of the week. We are keeping the same, actually, the period's a little longer. Right now, the period's in the building, I believe, are eighty minutes. Uh, so we're actually going to an eighty-three minute period, and you notice besides that, the eighty-three minute period is five point five, three hours per day. So it meets the standard. Traditionally, our, traditionally, the Carver High School, Carver Middle High School has exceeded the nine ninety. So if we go back to our pre-COVID schedule, you know, two, two years ago, it was actually a thousand forty-four hours. Uh, then that was out, without the half-days. You pulled the half-days in, it probably broke down, it was probably close to the, between a thousand twenty and a thousand thirty hours. Uh, but the base schedule was a thousand forty-four hours. So I, because we were in school a long part of the day, so these eighty-three periods may be eighty-five minutes or ninety-minute periods. Um, so what the law, but in the COVID world, right now, we're only doing eighty-minute periods, so it's actually three more minutes than we're currently doing. What the students are losing is the lunch period. And then it, it is actually an extended homeroom-like support period, uh, at the beginning of the day. Part of the reason why we put that in, I don't know if you remember back to September, is we weren't really sure how long it was gonna take us to get students into the building. Uh, with drop-off and pickup and the bus restrictions, and so we built in like a long homeroom period. Uh, so what's removed from the schedule is that long, that long homeroom period of lunch. Uh, and, and it does just meet the standard requirement of the nine, of the nine hundred and ninety hours or five point five hours per day. Um, so I don't know if you have any questions for Mike or I about lunch, about breaks or snack. Or obviously, this is, the schedule is the biggest piece of this change that we're, we're proposing.
Um, so you answered one of my questions, cause one of my questions was transportation, how are we gonna get these kids home? But, um, the other piece of this is, what about after-school activities? Um, and, you know, sports and after-school clubs and things, cause you might have a teacher that is. You know, leading one of those things that teaches, you know, maybe middle school, so there, like, so are we gonna have kids hanging around the building for an hour? Or like, what is the thought process around that and how we're gonna handle that?
So it's, it's gonna depend on who the coach is and the timing of that. Um, if the coach is available to do a, like a one-thirty practice, uh, that would be fine. We still have to work out logistics of that though. I mean, we gotta figure out all the positions. We haven't even dug into that in, in any great detail. It's not unusual for, especially in the winter, teams to, kids to go home and get rides back. So, um, our league doesn't usually start any competition till, till four o'clock, so games would be four o'clock. Um, for the most part, a lot of kids, we ask to go home and come back during the year. And, um, you know, people have figured out how to do it, cause a lot of kids have been hybrid. So when you're hybrid anywhere, you gotta get a ride to school at different times. So I haven't really looked at that as a potential issue, it could be, but we definitely can't have kids hanging out after school. So if they're not, there are a few coaches that are not in the building that have flexible hours, that may choose to do like a one-thirty tennis practice, say. Uh, but if you're not practicing after school, you must leave, um, go home, get lunch, really, get lunch, change and come back. Cause we're not using our locker rooms either. Uh, so they're kind of used to that. Um, it is, it may be a challenge in the beginning, but we just have to set those expectations.
Jason, and, and.
Jason. Um, just to clarify, the teacher's workday doesn't change.
The, the teacher's workday does not change. No, this is not reducing the teacher's workday.
Yeah, so the teachers on the, on the, obviously, that group of eight through twelve teachers would have their lunch. Some point during that time, probably from one oh five-ish to, to one-thirty. And then, um, there would be some collaboration time, um, built in for them as part of an additional, uh, planning period.
I, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, any other questions about, Mike, we're still working out on the details of what a snack break may look like. I know, I might've been talking to the cafeteria, uh, and the cafeteria staff would actually be willing to provide a snack to all students. You would have to work out a schedule of what that's gonna look like and get some of the logistics of that down. Obviously, the students don't have to take a snack, they could certainly bring their own. And, and our thought process is to incorporate that into the mass breaks. You know, many teachers during the day have been taking mass breaks and have been either be using the cafeteria. Uh, the weather's getting nicer, obviously, this time of year, the weather will be nicer, having the opportunity to go outside. Um, I don't know if you have anything else to add, I'm not.
Well, other than, other than just that, we've been doing actually a grab and go type of snack model throughout the whole year after school for the sports programs. Um, it's interesting that, it's not a lot of kids take it, so I would encourage kids to do it. Maybe they will now, cause it's, it's a longer break. Uh, but we have, we are gonna set up, uh, a grab and go lunch. We're gonna have a, a system where eight through twelve classes will have snacks delivered to them at some point. Teachers would have to plan a schedule on how we're gonna do that. There are programs in our building, Mrs. Willlet's program is looking forward to helping and support that. Um, the reality is, I mean, it is a long time. So if you look at seven-twenty, some kids leave their house at seven and they leave at one, you know, it's a fairly long stretch of time, but. You know, and, and our old schedule, we have, kids are eating at ten o'clock sometimes and they're not getting home till two, two-thirty. We've had athletes for years have lunch at eleven and, and go away to, to a sports team, not have a snack or a break in between, so. Yeah, although it's not ideal, it's, uh, certainly not unusual that students have that stretch of time. We would encourage people to bring snacks for sure. Um, you know, we have some pretty good snack options. It's just a matter of kids getting in the habit of grabbing the snack, taking a break outside. We'll probably set, set up one of the tents that we have somewhere on the premises, so people can use it outside. The other one tends to not do so well on the wind.
It gets blown out as much as.
That one is more an event tent versus the other one that we have is more that can withstand, uh, a longer duration of time. So these are all things we have to work out, um, and we've begun that process with, um. Teresa in the, in the kitchen and some of the programs to help out. So once we have sort of confirmation on schedule, we'd have to figure out exactly, cause, you know, what period we're doing the snack break, what it looks like and so forth.
Um, I know the cafeteria utilization of the cafeteria or any, any full back-to-school and, you know, model. Was always a big concern, you know, uh, what, what's the, uh, what's the average spacing between the kids and, and the tables? I need to face the, the same.
Right, right now, in the cafeteria, we're using, we're using student desks.
No, no, I mean, it was a regular spacing, if they were all in there at a regular lunch.
Oh.
Oh, there's eight to ten at a table.
They're close, yeah, they're, they're, uh, they're next to each other.
Yeah.
So that's, less than a foot.
So some people watching at home might be like, well, why are they cutting lunch? I don't understand. But this is the reason why you're trying to get all the kids in, it's not the same, we can't treat it the same as we once did.
Yeah, our previous lunches, we'd have, I think we ran, we ran, just, God, I can't remember now.
Three lunches.
We ran three lunches. And, um, you would have two hundred and forty kids in the lunches, maybe more, somewhere in that ballbox. And now we're down to fitting eighty.
Yeah.
Um, we, we figured out a schedule. It was like running seven lunches from nine o'clock to like one o'clock, which would, one, we can't staff. Two, it's very disruptive to the schedule, almost impossible to run.
And, um, utilization of the cafeteria staff, everyone's still gonna be fully used, employed?
Yeah, because there's, uh, even though it's two lunches, there's a fair amount of work that goes in to do the grab and go lunches. And then once we have those set up, we have to man the stations. Actually, we're gonna need more help.
And we're actually looking to add the snack into that component too.
Yeah, so.
So it's like, yeah.
Basically, we're gonna have to have four stations in our four exits of the building with these racks set up for kids to grab and go lunch. And we'll have a sense after the first week of how many kids are actually gonna take the lunches out. We have no sense of that right now. You have to set up for, uh, four hundred lunches and see what happens.
Right, so we make sure no one was, we were, I think it was important to think about that as well, make sure no one was losing their job, or if they were.
Now we're hiring.
Okay, I'm, yeah, same for the community. Also, um, are there any negatives to taking away the homeroom portion? Were, were there any negatives to the students? Do they benefit, what do they, what's the benefit really, or is there?
So the homeroom period was designed for two things. Um, it was designed, because we weren't really sure about what the tardies would look like each day, which was a twenty-minute block.
Yeah.
It was also designed to sort of be a check-in place for students. So, um, if, if the class was a small class and kids were on time, we encouraged that first period to get started early. But really, I think it was just a place for, for us to sort of check in, and definitely in the beginning, how are you doing? This opportunity, almost like a little bit of an advisor program, where students can just connect with the, the, the building.
So basically, the same as when I went.
Well, I, well, I, but a little bit, a little bit of a, uh, just building on that a little bit. Part of that was built in, I think, because we were going into the hybrid model and students were only coming into schools two, two days a week. You know, previously, in the old schedule, there wasn't a twenty-minute homeroom period. So that was built this year as part of the hybrid model. And traditionally, before that, it was a much shorter homeroom, five, five minutes, really.
Yeah.
Uh, so it was a more traditional homeroom type of period.
You're going right to their first class.
Yeah, so now, hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to build some of those connections, obviously, by having students, students be in school every day. Where I think the hybrid piece made it a little bit more of, when, when students were there, we wanted to make sure we were really, uh, spending some time with them and checking with them.
And this amount of time between classes is enough for the kids, between classes?
Passing.
Four-minute passing, yeah.
Yeah, we reduced it by a minute. I mean, yeah, it's not a large building. We could pass in probably three minutes. We're also, you know, what, we have to make sure that it's not that extra time to hang out.
Yeah.
Socialize. We really have to keep them moving.
It's true. And I will say, that's been something that I've been very impressed with this year at the middle high school, that the students have been outstanding. Um, I think people, people have really taken the precautions and the protocols and the social distancing really seriously from the standpoint of. You don't see students hanging on the hallway. You know, when, when there is passing, kids go to their class. They move from one class to next. Uh, which I can call some negatives about that too. You know, this, school's a little different, you know, and there is a socialization part of school, and there's a value of students seeing each other in passing and those sorts of things. But really, this year, students have been outstanding in terms of, you know, they, they move from one class to next.
Okay.
Um.
Jay. What's Jay, uh, Jen, go ahead.
Jason, go first.
Oh, go ahead, Jen.
Okay. Um, I was just gonna say, um, I know you said that you're still figuring out the, the snacks and things, but would. Is the thought process that it would be like while they're passing, there'd be like a grab and go station that could grab a snack in between classes? Or is it gonna be during the class?
Yeah, it'd be in class.
Okay.
It would be delivered to certain classrooms at a certain time each day.
Okay.
So the teachers could plan the break.
Okay.
Most of our staff still do a mass break at some point in the period. Whether it be in the beginning, in the middle, or at the end. So the, the idea was it'd already be in the class, students could grab it. I mean, the snacks are usually granola bars or smart, smart food popcorn or something along those lines. They'd be able to grab it on the way out for a mass break.
Okay. Um, I mean, kudos for thinking creatively. I mean, realistically, that cafeteria is built for a four-grade high school, you know, or well, I guess it was like five or six grades. But we added the middle school and we brought kids in. Um, probably should have expanded the cafeteria, hindsight being twenty-twenty. Um, is there any consideration of trying to? Figure out maybe additional seating outside, like I know outside of each of the sides of the cafeteria, there's like lawn area there, like. Have we looked into, could we get some kind of tent area to get more seating to not have to do this? Or do we feel like at this point, it's just not realistic to try to?
It's multiple things. It's not just the number of seats available, it's the staffing for the lunches. Um, it's the schedule itself. If we were to run seven or even six lunches. It would wreak havoc on the schedule itself, because you'd have students eating at different times. And you wouldn't be able to have any type of consistency, like a period one, period two, period three lunch. Right now, it's hard to run the schedule with, with the three different lunches, but it works. When you start adding a six and. Right now, it's hard to run the schedule with, with the three different lunches, but it works. When you start adding a sixth and seventh. Grade lunch, it just gets a little bit more challenging and to be honest.
Right, but it's not possible to keep just the three lunches with adding seating in more places.
What do you mean by the?
No, I, I.
The three lunches that are in place right now?
Yeah.
No, because the first lunch would suddenly be, would be about a hundred and, um. I think we're looking at about a hundred and sixty, so we're going to be using the middle, we're going to use the cafeteria and the entire gym. The next couple lunches would be bigger, uh, and we'd have to use the other gym and now you're interrupting programming and classes.
Uh, and right now we have about eighty-four, just over eighty seats in the cafeteria. Like that, that's our max, what we can fill the cafeterias. Around the, a little over eighty. In terms of outside, I mean, I know outside sounds great, but there's a reality piece of what do you do when it's not a nice day. Even if you have tents and all those things, if it's cold or raining or, uh, I just think there's too many.
We'd have to enclose, some districts have done this. We'd have to enclose the tents, but now you're enclosing the space and you're limiting the number of seats within the tent. Uh, the tents are really expensive and they have jacked the price up on tents because.
And you, and you still have to do the six feet facing the same direction.
So we'd have. Again, it's a schedule impact, um, in talking to, um, you know. The cafeteria staff has been outstanding managing this and when working with us. Again, you're talking about up to six different lunches. Um, that would start, you know, around nine o'clock really. And the prep is earlier and go to one, you're adding, you know, two or three hours to the schedule. So staffing becomes an, an, an issue as well.
Yeah.
Um. As Mr. Neve said, you know, if this is the same regulation next year, we're going to have to. Look into those things and purchasing potentially tents or shutting, redoing our entire schedule. So there's no phys ed classes during a certain time. Um, but it would be way too disruptive to the schedule to do it for, for the six weeks. I think it'd be really challenging. And, and other districts have gone to this similar model. So Duxbury is doing it, Hingham's doing it, Milton's doing it. They just can't, because of the number of grades within the same school district, they can't figure out lunch.
Yeah.
And, and I'm going to get into this into later slides, but also the schedule we have here. Our goal is that most, the majority of students, like, and I don't know if I can a hundred percent promise that every student will not have a schedule change. But they're going to be able to maintain their four classes, their four classes they're currently in. We don't have to change this, the schedule. Uh, we're a lot, if we had to move lunch around, that could have some, some impact on.
Yeah, preliminary numbers don't have, uh, right now I don't see anybody. There's a couple displaced classes, meaning a class of twenty-four may have to go to the library or the auditorium. I don't see individual yet schedule implications for students, meaning five kids have to leave a science class. And move to a different science class, which really was, is the goal. We don't really want to disrupt.
Okay.
Students at this point.
Jason, I know you had your hand up a couple times.
Jason.
Is this all students facing forward a guideline or a mandate?
In terms of lunch, all students have to be.
It was a mandate.
Yeah.
So hoping you're going to say guidance, but.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so. Well, just moving on, we kind of, we started because this is a big point. This is, this is the big piece of the presentation in terms of the schedule change. This is the biggest impact. So we took some time here. Uh, you know, so, you know, this was just, I just got some original numbers. You know, there are currently twenty-one classes with twenty or more students, uh, six of the twenty are physical education classes. Uh, we have one academic class that has twenty-four students in it. Um, the majority of our other academic classes at twenty or over have a class size of twenty or twenty-one. Um, so it's not like we have ten classes of twenty-six or twenty-seven, you know, even if they're over twenty, they're right, they're right at twenty or twenty-one students. Uh, you know, we're currently identifying areas, like you said, maybe not even have to do this in terms of maybe splitting some classes if, if the opportunity is there. Uh, we're also evaluating class space. You know, the big takeaway, um, is as we make adjustments for larger classes. You know, we can't say that there, no one's going to change their schedule, but as Mike just said, we're, uh, we think we might be able to do that. Uh, but we also want to be clear with people that there, there may be some minor schedule implications. Uh, in terms of classes moving to a different location. Uh, or a class and not, you know, being in the space they were designed for. So maybe a science class can't be in the science lab. Uh, and then, um, also the possibility that some students may need to be split. But it's not going to be the movement that we had at the elementary school, uh, in terms of the impact on students. Um. Right now, you know, moving to the hallways, the current parent is working well. Um, sixth and seventh grade is passing the hallways at a different time than eight to twelve. The sixth and seventh grade teams also control the movement of the students in the hallway. So we have to remember that sixth and seventh grade are in three teams. Uh, so those teams work together with each other and have a lot of control in terms of student movement. Right now, we're using one directional stairways. You know, we're going to look at this more, but right, right now, I don't think the plan is to do anything different than that. Because we feel like it's, what we've been doing right now has been really successful. Uh, but we, we'll take a look at it. If people have concerns, we'll, we'll address those as they come up. Um, some other, just some procedural things. Uh, we do need to update our school calendar. So as I mentioned earlier. Uh, the last remote half day Wednesday for the elementary students would have to be Wednesday, March thirty-first. Uh, the last remote half day Wednesday for the middle high school would be April fourteenth. Uh, we want to add a professional day for teachers in grades six through twelve on Friday, April sixteenth. Um. We would like to add, uh, two half days back into the calendar, uh, add a district wide in-person half day on Wednesday, June second. Uh, historically, that's a date that's been, there's always been a half day in May or June, specifically the elementary school. Then we look at articulation and student placement for next year. The teachers are actively involved in that process. We actually need to give them some time to do that. So that's one of the major purposes of that half day. And then historically, the last day of school has been a half day in the district. Uh, so my recommendation would be that the last day of school for students, which right now is scheduled to be June eighteenth. You know, pending that we don't have any other delays for any reason. Um. So we look to add a half day on June second, uh, and add a half day district wide on Friday, June eighteenth. Um. So that, that's kind of the end of our presentation for now, you know, then we would come back. Uh, you know, at the April twelfth meeting, which is our next meeting, kind of give us an update of where we are in terms of transitioning at the middle high school. Uh, we'll have some more information about, you know, how many kids are coming in person, how many students have decided to go remote. We'll look at some of the issues like Jen brought up in terms of athletics and movement about the hallways, maybe have a little more information about the snack will look like. Uh, in terms of, you know, we'll have some more details, uh, to underline the, the overall structure of, of our plan. So I don't know if anybody else has any other questions right now, or Mike, if you want to add anything else right now.
The only I would say is, uh, again, the, the staff has been, uh. Very supportive and they've worked with us. Um, they're looking at their class sizes. They're within their departments, um, problem solving with us and they're saying, okay, I don't have a class this period. You can use my room. So. This, this collaborative effort by the staff throughout the entire year. And again, obviously this is another transition that's going to be challenging. They have been, uh, super supportive and doing what it takes to, to make this work. So I just want to give them. A, a shout out because it's, you know, this is just another disruptive, challenging opportunity. That, um, they're taking on and helping out. So I, I do want to thank them.
And I echo Mike's sentiments a hundred percent. Uh, so, and this would just be our proposed timeline, you know, school community decision tonight. Uh, a letter to the parents in the community, either tomorrow or Wednesday. It's pretty, it's in draft form. It's pretty much ready to go. Uh, I just want to make sure we nail down a couple pieces and we'd be asking people to complete a transportation form, uh, by Thursday, April first. And again, like at the elementary school, we want, we'd like every family to fill out the transportation form, whether you're, even if you're remote. You know, just, we just want to account for everybody to make sure that we can do our routes. Uh, and that worked out well for us at the elementary school. Uh, we'll do some reminders for people. Uh, complete request to change model form. So if you're going to go from. If you're currently hybrid and you're going to stay in person, you don't need to do anything. Uh, so you're, you're staying in person. If you're going to transition from in person to remote, you have to fill this, uh, request to change model form. Or if you're going to go from remote to full in person, you have to complete this form. Uh, we're giving people a little more time than we did at the elementary school because the proposed timeline is longer. You know, we're proposing really a month away from the transition. We're at the, uh, elementary school, we were closer to two or three weeks. Uh, so we're giving people a little, you know, a week and a half, uh, to fill these two forms out if they need to do it. Uh, with again, the proposed full in person return six through twelve on April twenty-sixth.
Uh, one last line of detail, just, um, we did extend term three.
Yes.
It's supposed to end on Monday, the twelfth of April. We extended it to Friday. Uh, because there was some scheduling implications for the start of term four. So bringing everybody back together to start a term four made sense. So we've extended. Um, term three through that week.
Okay.
Minor detail, but something we need to look at in terms of planning.
So if we transition on the twenty-sixth, that would actually be the first day of term four.
Thank you guys. And, uh, yes, thank you for all, all the staff that worked so hard as, as two gentlemen here. Mentioned this whole year has been like that, uh, rising to challenges, uh, for, for us as a committee and our students. Um, in the town. So we have, uh, two proposed motions here. Uh, one on to bring the kids back from six, uh, six through twelve and another on the calendar. Anybody like to make a motion on? Bringing the children, the kids back six through twelve on April twenty-sixth.
I move that all students in grades six through twelve, except those opting to stay fully remote. Return to full in person learning five days a week, starting on Monday, April twenty-sixth.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, we motion the second. Uh, we're going to take these both, we'll take these both separately, obviously. But do you want to make a bundle?
I, I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense. I mean, you can, you can bundle if you want to.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, okay. James, did you have something?
I did not, Andy, but it looks like Jason might need to say something. This should be a time for discussion.
Yeah, I, I didn't see his hand back up.
Right.
Um. My only concern with this, well. My, my feelings still say the same from when we had the elementary one, but it's again, it's moot because it's a state thing. My concern is having three hundred something extra kids come in all at the same time. Um, have you considered phasing in grades, like phasing in over three days, those first three days, so twenty-sixth to some of the students? Twenty-seventh, you know, another hundred students, then full on the twenty-eighth.
We have, we looked, we looked at phasing. We just thought logistically that would be challenging. Uh, and, and, and from my perspective, quite honestly, if we, um, if we were going to phase. I'd want to phase over a longer period of time, not a couple of days. Uh, and I think if, if we were going to. If we're going to bring them all back in, we should bring them all back in because, uh, especially at the middle high school in terms of. Right now, they, they run two different schedules. And if you were going to have a group of kids come in and have another group not come in, it almost creates a third schedule logistically. In terms of managing that. And if it's in, and if everyone's going to come back in at once, well, if there was a comeback in eventually. Uh, in our minds, it made sense to just bring everybody back at once instead of phasing it in over a couple of weeks. And ultimately, the commissioner might come, he says it was going to be a phased approach. He hasn't called his date yet. Uh, I don't want to speak for him. He hasn't hinted this. This is a total conjecture on my part. I do think his nine through twelve date is going to be sometime in May. You know, it might be two weeks later. Uh, and you can make the argument, well, I will hold on nine, twelve until two weeks later. Uh, and see what happens with six and seven. Uh, and.
We looked at a six and seven transition first and then a nine through twelve. Again, there's scheduling, because we went to your schedules, there's scheduling conflicts plus there's a lunch issue because you still can't. You'd have to run three lunches or two lunches for the, for the, um, sixth and seventh graders. And then you have to still run your lunches for the nine through twelve. So there, there's scheduling implications, there's crossover with staff. And again, there's a, there's a lunch issue. So we originally had thought about going six through twelve first.
Six, six and seven.
Seven and then nine through twelve. But as we started to dissect the layers of it, it made more sense to bring them all back together at the same time.
Well, in grade eight must somehow affect that too, right? Because. Twelve, but they have.
Right, so.
With the middle school mandate, right?
Correct. So we, we would have to apply, if we were going to do a phased transition, six, seven, then eight, twelve. We would have to apply for a waiver, uh, from the state, uh, for the eighth graders to come in with the nine through twelve group.
And I believe, uh, like Mr. Neve said, I think that, that you're going to get some, we're going to get guidance at the last minute, that nine through twelve has to come back. And we're not going to have a, you know. A, a plan will have just got six and seven in and now we're doing this all again. So I think this is a proactive approach. Uh, nine through twelve. As one, uh, six through twelve is one big group.
I said I was going to reference this later in the presentation. I didn't. I do think looking at where we are with staff vaccinations, I know students can't be vaccinated well. Actually sixteen and up can be vaccinated. So that's going to be a personal choice that families are going to have to make. Uh, after April nineteenth, uh, the state's plan right now is to open up vaccinations. So. Our, many of our juniors and seniors will be eligible for vaccination after June nineteenth. Sorry, I keep saying April nineteenth. Uh, even if they start that process, they probably won't be vaccinated till June nineteenth, or it's the end of the school year, but that isn't, that is an option, but. Looking where we are in terms of staff, I, I think looking where we currently stand. A month from now, that, you know, a, a good percentage of our staff is going to be fully vaccinated as well. And I do think that's supportive of. Uh, having people, having a full transition, uh, back in on the twenty-sixth.
So to answer your question, Jason, your concern?
Well, it answered my question.
Yeah. We considered it.
I know that.
Okay, no, go ahead.
I'm done, I'm done.
All right. So we have a motion in a second on the floor. We have anything else, any other discussion on this before we take a vote? Seeing none. Seven? No, okay. Uh, okay, roll call vote. Um, Stephanie, Glory?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Catterell, aye as well, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the second motion for the calendar. This has several parts, uh, we'd like to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to amend that school calendar to reflect the following changes. The end of half day Wednesdays as of April seventh at the elementary school. The end of half day Wednesdays as of April twenty-eighth at the middle high school. To add a professional day for teachers in grades six through twelve on Friday, April sixteenth. And to add a half day of school district wide on Wednesday, June second. And on the last day of school for students currently scheduled to be on Friday, June eighteen.
Motion. Okay, the motion in a second, any further discussion? Uh, Jen?
Should it actually be that the end of the half day Wednesdays is. Uh, March thirty-first, since that would be the last half day? I'm just confused on the way it's worded.
I think either wording is fine. As of April seventh means you can't do it after April seventh, uh, or you could say the last one is on March thirty-first.
But it's sort of insinues that April seventh would still be a half day and I think.
April seven.
Guidance, it.
And April seventh cannot be a half day.
Right, so.
So you can amend the motion to say the last half day at the elementary school would be March thirty-first.
Amend that?
I think we should amend it, um, just so that it's clear.
Um, I'll do it. I, you want me to?
Sure.
I move to amend the language to say. Um. The last half day Wednesday at the elementary school will be March thirty-first. And the last half day Wednesday at the middle high school will be April fourteenth.
Yeah, yes, April fourteen, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we motion the second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
It's asked, is there going to be, this will be in an email to family so they'll know?
Yes, so obviously the middle high school is going to get a, they're going to get a letter. Uh, that outlines everything, but yeah, there'll be an email to elementary family saying that no more half days, uh, after March thirty-first.
Now, now we're planning on putting together a presentation for parents to sort of outline. The schedule, the changes, information, whenever, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so there's another roll call vote. Uh, Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Yeah, Andy Catterell, aye. So the amendment passes. Now we'll go back to the original motion. Um. Some parliamentary procedure here. Do we need to have a updated motion or Jason, go ahead?
Oh, no, you already started your promise.
Okay, uh, it was just my, my question was, do we have to have an updated motion or based on the amendment?
No, so, yeah, my, yeah, so you had a mo, you had a motion, that motion.
For the minutes.
Yeah, so we, we had a motion, that motion was amended. Um, we had a motion that was seconded. We had someone amend that motion, that was seconded and they voted on the amended motion.
Wanted to make sure you were official on. Uh, okay, so.
What's the purpose of the June, uh, June second half day?
So June second half day primarily at the elementary school is going to be articulation and placement of students. That is typically a half day that we have, uh, where the teachers work with the administration in terms of placement for next year. And then historically, we've had a half day in May or June at the middle high school as well. Uh, you know, so we'll do some professional development at the middle high school. I don't know exactly what that's going to be yet, uh, but it would be a district wide half day.
Okay, any other further discussion? Let's see, G, uh, James disappeared on me. Here he is. Okay, uh, seeing none, this is a roll call vote as well. Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Catterell, aye as well. Andy Carter, aye as well. It's unanimous. So it's both paths. All right, so we'll move on to item E, upcoming events and in-person activities.
Yes, I just wanted to give the committee a little bit of an update. Uh, we've discussed this our last couple of meetings in terms of moving towards having some more in-person activities. Uh, and, uh, so this is not my intention, tight isn't to go through all these upcoming activities or highlight any of them in particular. But I just wanted to give the committee some information, uh, that we are planning some in-person events. Uh, and so first of all, uh, clubs and activities have the opportunity to meet in person if the advisors so chooses to do so. And some clubs and activities have begun to do that. Uh, we are planning on, um, the senior class has had some events approved. Uh, and this actually lists the events, you have any background, I met with the board of health. Uh, but I went with, I met with the health agent, I shouldn't say I met with the board. So I met with the health agent. Uh, we reviewed the events, the health agent took them to the board of health, I got approval of them. Uh, so we are planning on running. Um, some events for our seniors coming up. Uh, the senior show is going to be on the fourteenth and fifteenth. Uh, and that's going to be an in-person event. Uh, we're going to be using the auditorium, spacing people out at six feet apart. Uh, with a hundred person max in attendance. Uh, the students, a lot of the performances will actually be virtual, but there'll be some in-person piece of that as well. And we'll get a lot of people to attend in person. Uh, the seniors are actually planning a senior dinner dance, uh, on April twenty ninth. Um, following the guidelines, uh, of the venue that they're going to be using and all the guidelines established by the state, again, but approved by the board of health. Uh, the senior, senior class is going to do a trip to, uh, the duck boats, which is the traditional trip that they do, uh, in the fall. Um, but they haven't been able to, weren't able to do that this year. And again, uh, any event that we're running, anything we're doing. Is we're going to follow the guidelines established by the state for that venue. Uh, and then we're also following the Carver guidelines and, uh, you know, Desi's guidelines in terms of events that are happening. At our facility and, and on our grounds. And then aside to this, we have a French's lang-, French, uh, foreign language national society coming up, which is going to be in person. Uh, so just wanted to give the committee that they that we are beginning to plan, uh, in-person events, uh, for each of our grade levels. Um, in here, you also have a list of just some proposed in-person activities. Not, not all of these are a hundred percent going forward yet. But this is a proposal that came to Mr. Schultz for each of the grade levels, uh, in terms of some in-person activities that they could run. Um, so as I said, the goal here was just to give the committee an update, uh, because the question was coming, you know, we have sports happening. We have athletics happening, that's happening in person. Are other students, are other clubs or other activities going to have that same opportunity? Uh, and we are beginning to open up those opportunities to other groups.
Um, I think I just saw a little sneak peek of it, but is there going to be? So gra-, I think, did you, was graduation on there? Are we planning to do that in June this year?
Yes, so gra-, graduation's on there. And actually, Desi just released their graduation guidance last week. Uh, so graduation will be the first weekend in June. It will be outside. A lot of the guidance is very similar to, um. What it was, uh, last year, uh, and. I, I can make a more detailed presentation on graduation in the future if you'd like me to. I, we, I don't know if we, I don't think we released it to the parents yet, uh, or to the committee and. Just would like to hold off a little bit before I go into all the details about what graduation. Uh, but yes, we, our plan is to have outdoor graduation the first weekend in June. Uh, and a live in-person event.
Jason?
Last year, we had to vote to cancel something, right? One of our last in-person meetings. Is there anything on this list that we're going to have to approve? Because of the guidelines, because we had to can't, we had to vote to cancel the, the, the Spain trip.
So from my, from my perspective, uh, I'm saying that I'm informing the co-, the committee. That every event we're going to run is going to follow the established guidelines of the venue. The state, um, DPH or whatever the state lies, lays out, which are always changing. I mean, they just changed as of today. Uh, what the state guidelines were. And then obviously our own individual school guidelines. Um, I wasn't intending to bring anything to committee that wasn't nat-, that wouldn't naturally go before the committee in the past. You know, so if it was an out-of-state field trip, we're not planning out, out-of-state field trips. Uh, if it was an overnight field trip. Uh, but we're not planning any overnight field trips. Uh, we're not at that point yet. Uh, so the intention was to bring forward things to the committee that would normally underscore community policy come before the committee.
That was last year, we had events that were already planned before.
I just, I just want to try to.
Yeah.
Prepare for whatever might, might be coming down the play.
There is a, um, there is a Camp Bondale trip is on there. Uh, we're in, we're working with Camp Bondale, see if we can. Do a day trip in place of the overnight trip. So, you know, that we still have students fund from last year. We shifted from sixth grade to seventh grade. So we're going to find parents that are working on that.
I think, I think James raises his hand at home. James, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say thank you guys for, for starting to focus on this and starting to bring some things back because I think. It's, it's sort of been an odd flow of why this and why not that. And I, I think to try and bring a more consistent normalcy back is a, is a very positive thing. And, and I appreciate the way you're doing it. And the way that you're trying to stay within the expectations of what's supposed to be there, but also. Trying to give as much opportunity as you can for things to happen, for these kids to start to feel like, you know, things are, are somewhat. Returning to, uh, to more where they should be. And I want to say back to normal because I, I, there's no sense in ever going backwards. We're moving forwards. And, uh, and I appreciate your efforts to do that in a, in a positive way. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, no action required on that, just a list of activities for the committee.
So recommendations from the superintendent. Collaborative appointment.
If only I have one recommendation type, uh, as a member of Reed's collaborative, the school committee has to appoint someone to the board of directors annually. Uh, the superintendent has served on the board, uh, and I would be glad to continue my role on the Reed's board. Uh, I would entertain a motion. Uh, to that extent. Actually, currently right now, I'm serving as the chairperson, uh, for the board directors of Reed's. So if you don't send me back, they're going to have, they're going to get a new chair, they're going to get a new chairperson.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Mr. Neath, uh, to the Reed's collaborative board.
All right, we've a motion in a second to send Mr. Neath back to Reed's. Uh, any discussion, questions, comments?
Thank you, Scott.
Seeing none, except for the, oh, wait, James.
Just wanted to say thank you, Scott, for, for keeping with that and. It's been, it's been a consistent thing that you've taken care of, so much appreciate.
If you didn't do it, who would that go to?
This, the school committee gets to select a representative, so a member of the board would have to serve.
Like, is Mike Schultz on deck or is?
Mike's like, I gotta go back on it to be honest. Uh, no, it would be. It would be, it would be a member of the board. And it, it, yeah, obviously traditionally in most school districts, it is the superintendent of school who serves on the board.
Sounds great. All right, so we already, we have a, a motion in a second. Um, roll call vote, Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Carter, aye. Uh, it's unanimous. We send Scott back as a representative. Thank you again, Scott. I agree with everyone. Thank you for all you do for us in representing. Carver there.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, so let me just go to reports from the school committee. Anybody like to make comments before we adjourn and go to executive session?
I just wanted to say something really quickly.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, um, thank you to everyone across the district that has worked so hard, um. You know, to, to navigate all of these transitions and these constant changes in guidance. I know it's causing everyone to really have to. Remain fluid on a nearly a daily basis. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that has worked so hard to, um. Also go with the flow. Uh, I know it hasn't been easy. I know it's been a challenge and it's just. Amazing to see how much our district has really worked collaboratively. And I feel like everyone has really, you know, come together and really worked, um. To rise to those challenges. So I just want to say thank you, um, and to everyone at home. I just want to, um. You know, as we did with the elementary school transitioning, um, for everyone at the middle high school, um, you said, please be patient. Um, there will be more information forthcoming. If you have any issues, please reach out, um, you know, to your, your children's teachers. To administration, um, everyone there is to be, is there to support you. Um, I wish everyone a, a great spring, so. Thank you.
Stephanie? Jen, let's go.
Um, yeah, I echo Stephanie's sentiments. Um, this year has been hard and challenging and it's, uh, remaining so. Um, I, I personally had some frustrations when Commissioner Riley, um, you know, a, a year. Little, I guess less than a year ago, but, um, you know, said, school committees, you know, you're tasked with making these decisions. And figuring things out with your administrations. And then all of a sudden, he's turning around and saying, nope, you have to go back full in person. We don't care about all the decisions that you've made. This is happening and it's been sort of a one-size-fits-all approach and. Um, you know, I, I think that in Carver, we have been extremely lucky, um, with our cases overall. I, I feel terrible for friends that I have in larger districts, um. That are going to be faced with massive challenges, meeting, you know, these, I think, um, that we have done. A good job in our community, rising to the occasion, and I give so much credit to our administration team and to our teachers and our staff. Our district-wide staff. Um, everybody's working so hard to problem solve. Um, and it's really challenging and, you know, we have some building challenges and, you know, so kudos to you guys for thinking outside the box. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think it's ideal, but I don't know that there's anything that can be done better or different. You know, with these timeframes that we have. Um, and so, you know, I really do just thank everybody for continuing to be so collaborative. And working together. Um, you know, I know families are going to probably, there's going to be families that are going to have issues, you know, especially families that may have kids. You know, both in middle and high school, and they may have struggles with that change in scheduling and, you know, just, you know, uh, I'm going to, you know, just. Advance, thank our families for being, understanding that we're once again being put between a rock and a hard place and trying to just make it fit and make it work. Um, ultimately, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see the kids going back and I really hope that it's smooth and successful for grades three through five. I wish you, uh, good luck next week. Um, I know I have a very excited fifth grader at home who cannot wait. To get on the bus on Monday for the first time, um, board a bus on a Monday for the first time this school year. Um, she's been very jealous of her sister who's been back in for two weeks now. Um, so grades three through five students next week, um, good luck and to our teachers, um, good luck. And, um, just thank you, everybody sincerely, um, because this year just keeps throwing curveballs. Never-ending curveballs. Um, but together we can, and I, I just, I really think we are so lucky in Carver to have. To have the community that we have, you know, families, teachers, administration, all across the board. Um, you know, we've just worked together so well and, um, so thank you.
Thank you, June. Jason or James? Do you have anything? No, nothing, Jason? Nothing, James? Okay. Um, I'd like to echo the sentiment, sentiments of my, my colleagues here and thank everybody for their dedication and their bravery. And, and, uh, their enthusiasm to get back. I also want to wish, uh, wish everybody that celebrates, uh, Passover or Happy Passover, which starts on, I believe, the twenty-seventh and. And a happy Easter for everyone that celebrates Easter. And, uh, and happy spring for everybody. And, um. I want to get back to normal, you know, but I, 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 I tell, I tell, I'm trying to not bring up things, you know, I mean, like. I almost like I don't want to ramp the COVID, uh, uh, topic, but it seems like we can't, uh, avoid it. But I was happy to hear. That, um, we were down in numbers since last, to the October levels. Because this time last year, we were going into a big, big spike. And it was a lot different, uh, at that time. So that's encouraging to me anyway. And, um, but anyway, that's it. So I would, um, entertain a motion to go to executive session and not return.
I move to adjourn to executive session, uh, for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union, non-union personnel. And not return to open session.
Okay, we've a motion in a second. Roll call vote, Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James?
James O'Brien, aye.
Okay, Andy Carter, early aye. We are adjourned at eight fifty. Thank.